I'd like to call the January 13, 2011, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Here.
Mr. Pong.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Fryling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Before we begin our business today, I'd like to say something very briefly. Because our work session was canceled on Monday, and because there's a great deal of interest in the Arts District ordinance that council is going to be considering today, I've decided after consulting with council members to change the order of our consideration slightly. After the staff presentation regarding the ordinance and council's questions to staff, we will have a brief public comment period for anyone who wishes to address council on the proposed ordinance before returning to council for discussion and possible action. So again, we'll change the order slightly, and anyone who wishes to speak at that time will be invited to speak. I have some speakers' cards, but anyone who wishes to speak will certainly have the time, and we encourage you to speak if you wish. That being said, the next order of business is council minutes. We have minutes for the December 6, December 9, 2010, and the special meeting of December 1 and December 17, 2010. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we, City Council, approved the minutes of December 6, 9, and 17, including the 1, as they've been distributed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pong.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
The next order of business is a matter of special privilege, and this is always a terrific opportunity for the city because it's a time when we recognize one of our own who has given exemplary service. And what's important about this is that this comes from their peers. The recipients are selected by their peers, and that is a measure of both the importance that the city puts on this, but the importance that peers put on the selection of the individual for this. And today, we have an excellence in service to Williamsburg to be presented to senior municipal service worker Willie Matthews. Mr. Matthews, if you would join me at the podium.
Willie Matthews has faithfully and effectively served Williamsburg for over six years as senior municipal service worker in the Facilities Maintenance Division of Public Works. He is responsible for maintaining fourteen city buildings nearby the public and city stay-out. He works closely with many groups and events at the popular Williamsburg Community Building. Willie's warm, caring personality and pleasant disposition make every interaction a pleasurable experience for citizens and colleagues alike. As a city resident, he gives back to the community on his own time. He serves as a neighborhood representative in the city's Citizen Emergency Response Team, CERT program. Willie Matthews is quick to volunteer with charitable initiatives, always lending a helping hand. He is a true public servant and model citizen. Willie Matthews is hereby recognized for his dedication to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the city of Williamsburg, as stated today, January 13, 2011, and signed by me as mayor and Jackson Tuttle, the city manager. Willie, congratulations.
First of all, I would just like to say thank you. I want to say thank you to all my family and friends who came to support me today. I thank all the ones who couldn't be here, but they're watching at home on TV. And most of all, I want to thank all of my city coworkers, because I think we have a great group of people here, and being a small group, we get the job done. So once again, thank you.
Congratulations again, and we have a plaque for you to put wherever you want to put it. And thank you for all of your...
Thank you.
The next order of business is a public hearing, and this is PCR 10-018, the request of Walsingham Academy for a special use permit to build a 925-square-foot addition to the lower school. The project is located at 1100 Jamestown Road and is zoned RS1, single-family dwelling district. Carolyn.
Mayor Holman and members of council, as you just stated, this is a request by Walsingham Academy for a small addition to the school at 1100 Jamestown Road. As you can see on the overhead here, this small area here is a 925-square-foot addition. This addition will be used as activity space in support of the existing pre-K4 program. It is located on the south side of the existing wing of the lower school, and in the initial phase, it would be a covered porch with plans to enclose the area when funds are available. This property is designated in the 2006 comprehensive plan as public and semi-public land use. It is zoned RS1 and is surrounded by RS1-zone property across Jamestown Road to the west, to the north and east by Holly Hill subdivision, and to the south by the Yorkshire subdivision. The special use permit section of the zoning ordinance establishes the criteria for special use permits as outlined in my memo. The Architecture Review Board approved the addition in June of last year. The small addition will not protrude closer to the Yorkshire subdivision than its closer neighbor to the existing lower school. This proposal is consistent with the 2006 comp plan, which shows this property as public and semi-public land use and with the intent of the RS1 zoning district. It is compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and the building design has been approved by the Architecture Review Board. At its December meeting, Planning Commission recommended approval of the special use permit by a vote of 7-0. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Representatives from the school are also here if you have any questions of them.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions? Hearing no questions, we'll come to council for discussion or a motion.
Public hearing.
Oh, public, sorry. I'm focused later on. We have a public hearing, that's why we're here. So I'd ask if there's anyone who wants to speak to the issue of the request of Walsingham Academy for a special use permit, please come forward at this time.
My name is Greg Granger. I live across the street in the Walnut Hill subdivision. I'm familiar with the school. My children attended the pre-K program there, and I think Walsingham's a tremendous asset to the community. And I think doing things which make it easier for children to be educated there and the school to succeed in their mission is completely on board with what the city should be doing.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Anyone else like to speak to the issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to City Council for any discussion or comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Ms. Murphy a question?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Noting the proximity of the proposed addition to the houses immediately adjacent to the school, have you heard any feedback from the residents in that area?
No, we sent APOs to everyone surrounding this area and all the way around the subdivision. We did not get any feedback other than at Planning Commission. We did have the president of the Homeowners Association say that he was in support of the request at the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of PCR 10-018, the request of Walsingham for a special use permit to build a 925-square-foot addition to the lower school.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pong.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Fryling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Thank you. And again, Walsingham has been a tremendous member of this community for a number of years, and I'm pleased that we're able to help them expand their operations and do an even better job of educating the children in this community. The next order of business is reports. First is monthly financial statements. Jack, is there anything?
Just one thing to point out. If you look on page one, you'll notice that we're now at the six-month point through the fiscal year, and if you compare where we are at this point in time to where we were a year ago, it's nearly dead-on, both in revenues and expenditures overall, at same levels that they were last year. You'll see some accounts, some items are up and others are down, but the total comes out to within a few dollars of where we were at the same point last year.
Good news and bad news.
That's right.
Any questions for the city manager or for the financial director on the financial report? Now, the next order is monthly operating, department operating reports. Any...
Just two things I thought I would point out. You'll see in the police report and also in the highlighted indicators up front that the police response time now, we've gone for a period of time, we did not have that metric, but the work has been done, as the chief mentions in the front of his report, with York County and the E91 operation there. So we now have very high confidence that the response time numbers that we're getting are from the point of dispatch to the time that the officer arrives on the scene, and the average is 3.3 minutes over the last six months. So we'll use that going forward and be able to compare going forward whether response times are getting better or getting worse. So that was important. Also noted in the Recreation Department's report is the, on a calendar year basis, the numbers in here show, obviously fiscal year, but on a calendar year basis, the farmer's market in 2010 brought in over $1 million. And so that's quite a threshold to meet, to achieve. It's always done well, but $1 million of sales is just amazing, and something I think we can all be very pleased with.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager on operating reports?
I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Tuttle, I assume that metric for the police response time is based on time of dispatch, because how else do you measure?
Right.
Beginning of phone call, end of phone call. How does that, or do we have any idea if there's a benchmark?
Yes.
Against which this can be compared?
Right. There are benchmarks, and we're part of the International City Management Association's Performance Measurement Network, and this is one of the metrics that they track with communities that are part of that all over the country. So we can get you that information now and show you how we compare with other localities, and we'd be happy to do that.
3.3 minutes seems like a pretty good turnaround.
Pretty good.
Scott, any questions?
I'm just a little curious, and when you brought up police, this drew my attention to it. It's a significant, year-to-date calls for service is 18, five, whereas year-to-date last year was about 15. Is there any explanation for that?
Chief has anything he could add to that, and Andy Barker, Major Barker, can respond to that.
The calls for service can be accounted for in an increase in the number of house checks that are done. Also, because of the number of burglaries that were on the rise, fortunately today, I'm able to announce that we've made an arrest and have cleared a number of those. But the increase in foot patrol and business security checks to try to prevent that will cause for officer-initiated calls for service, which will cause them to go out, which may not otherwise be tracked, by an arrest or a summons, such as the foot patrols and business checks and house checks. And we've increased those.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to call council's attention. On page 48, the city manager's report, he talks about rising medical costs for staff, and I just, with the budget coming, I think we're going to have to watch that very carefully. I mean, it's happening everywhere, and medical costs are a huge part of what we're going to have to think about in terms of salary and budget and all of that. So I just wanted to mention that. The other thing, which is a little nicer, page 62, the snow removal numbers. I thought the city did a wonderful job of snow removal during the Christmas fair.
Let me follow up on the first question about medical expenses. Could you explain very briefly how the city funds the medical insurance program?
Essentially, we're self-insured. We have Anthem programs, but the city's premium is driven by the expected losses that we expect to have, or expected payments in the coming year. So that's what we pay for each month, and so ultimately, what we will pay is based on our usage of the medical services. And Anthem essentially is administering that for us. So we track on a monthly basis what we're doing on the claims, so we have a better idea of what we're going to be able to expect in the coming year in terms of increased premium costs. We are now running three years where we have had, we've been in the double digits on health care increases. The current year, last year, our health care increase was 17 percent. This is one of the areas we'll be talking about at the council retreat, because it, Ms. Knutson is right, this is going to be one of our significant budget issues next year.
But I think it's important for citizens to understand the way we do it and why changes occur, and it really is based upon, you know, employees' use of services.
Yeah. And I'll also say, over that same time we've had those increases, we've also been reducing benefits. We have been cutting back on service to try to control the growth in cost, and it really just all comes down to the cost of medical coverage.
Great.
Yeah.
Mr. Tuttle, as VML offers liability insurance opportunity for communities in Virginia, do they offer anything similar for health insurance?
No.
If they did, would it even be something that would be of interest to the city? I just think with a small pool of employees, one or two circumstances could really impact significantly the overall premium.
That's true, and it does. We, last year, about this time, we went out into the market to solicit alternative proposals. We received one, and that's from our current provider. And the Virginia Municipal League has a whole menu of excellent insurance programs, but health care is one issue they are not involved in.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. The next order of business is planning reports. I think we've had that. Next, city managers' reports, and we have two issues here. Jack?
Right. The first one concerns the schedule and process for our budget, which will be adopted for the, to begin, in fiscal year, beginning July 1 of this year. And so the purpose of the memo is just to outline all the points along the way. Couple of things. I mentioned the council retreat. That's going to take place on January 22, a week from this Saturday. That's council's first look at the major budget issues. And then I'm starting a series of meetings. Had my first one just yesterday with city employees. I'll have 12 of those to involve our employees in the process, and we go over these same issues with them. And also, on the citizen's side, we have meetings, and fortunately, we have an excellent forum in the Neighborhood Council of Williamsburg. I met with them in October. We'll meet with them again in April. And through our communications specialists we put online, will unfold as budget documents and information become available. It will be put online, and we have an opportunity there for comment to come back from citizens to the council and to staff as we go through the process. So there's no action to be taken on this, but just wanted you to see what's ahead.
Would you provide the dates for both when you anticipate council to be discussing budgets?
Yes.
When there are budget hearings being held?
Yes. March 18 is the date. The proposed city manager budget will go to city council and be made public. On March 21 and 22, city council will hold its budget work sessions, and at that time, of course, the public is invited to listen and to be part of that. The formal budget hearing occurs on April 14, and if there's any subsequent work or work sessions that need to be done, those are set at that time. Budget adoption then is scheduled for May 12.
Thank you. And those dates are, were we clearly available on the city's website?
They are now.
Can you communicate again?
Mr. Tuttle, in the past, the budget work sessions, the review of outside agency requests, those sessions are held in the evening and have been held on the third floor of the municipal building.
Right.
Will that space be ready and available?
The, we probably, we may well make a move to another location. And the reason I say that is the third floor conference room is being totally, will be being worked on and redone at that time. We will have available to us the conference room in the new section of the building. It's a little bit smaller, so we're going to have to make a decision whether, based on past history, it will be more than adequate. However, if we have enough interest at that point that we think we need to move to a larger space, we will. So at this point, it will be in the municipal building as it has been in the past, but that could change.
Thank you.
Okay. Any...
I know in the past, being held at the municipal building doesn't allow it to be televised. Is that something council should consider going forward? I know that there's been, there's some discussion at the county, I think resonates that, you know, these public dollars and the public has the, should have the opportunity to hear the discussion. Might that be something we consider?
Okay. Yes. We'll certainly discuss that and look at the options as we move toward that. But thank you, that's a good thought.
I think it's, if I may, it's just a little bit disappointing. Last year, we had two budget work sessions, and not a single individual who wasn't associated with the outside agencies showed up to see the budget hearing. So I don't know if that's indicative of a lack of interest or lack of opportunity, but it is unfortunate.
Well, we'll see what we can do to ensure more opportunity. Okay, thanks. Any further questions on the schedule for the budget process? If not, the next order of business is the Arts Cultural District, proposed ordinance 11-01. And again, as I suggested at the beginning of the meeting, we will first have staff presentations, then come to council for any questions they have of staff. We will then open the floor for public comment. I have, I believe, four speakers' cards at this time. I'll ask those people to come forward and speak, and then anyone else who wants to speak to the ordinance will have an opportunity to do so, and then we'll come back to council for discussion and possible action. With that, we're ready for staff presentation.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and begin, and then I'm going to ask Michelle if she'll pick it up.
Okay.
In the memo that I sent to you dated January 6, we outlined a bit of the process of, that's led us up to this point, so I wanted to highlight that and then turn it over to Michelle and let her get into the content. This, for us, began in earnest back in December of 2009, when the city and the Economic Development Authority of the city appointed a joint task force to work on the idea of an arts district. And that was a follow-on from a decision that was made by the council back in 2006, 2007, to take several areas of the city and made a zoning change at that time that increased the flexibility and the use of that, those areas, to allow for artist-live-work space. So that was done as a zoning change some time ago. The arts task force then, as they started having a series of public meetings, and I've seen a report of the, going back over how just how involved and detailed they were and how many people were involved, literally in the hundreds, going through a process, and they hired a consultant called Art Space to suggest what the city might be able to do moving forward with this concept. That resulted in a report in May of last year recommending to the city three next steps. The first, one of those next steps was that the city consider an ordinance which would designate an arts district in which certain tax incentives could be offered for artistic and creative economy activities. So that recommendation came forward to council in May. At that point, of course, we were in council elections, and so it was simply held in abeyance to allow the new council to come onboard and begin the new council's goals, initiatives, and outcomes process, which you all did through September, October, and November. And through that process, this was one of the issues on the table and discussed on a number of occasions with, and I will say throughout this, we've really had excellent media coverage and public involvement, and that's been really helpful. Then in November, council adopted its goals and initiatives, and one of those was to proceed with those three steps, the first one being the arts district ordinance. And it was, the mayor, I believe, mentioned this as well in the State of the City address in November. Then in December, as a follow-on with, once the city council had set its goals and determined that it wanted to move in this direction, Michelle came in the December work session, presented the concept of the ordinance, presented the ordinance itself, and then it was made available, and the public discussion began. At that point, then, council asked if it would be brought forward in January for consideration, and that's where we are now. So with that, by way of preface, Michelle.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and city manager for the introduction. See if I can get the PowerPoint going here. So today, we're talking about, as Jack said, the report that was issued in May of 2010, and it recommended three next steps that we take working towards an arts district and creative economy initiative in the city. And the first one was a arts district ordinance, and that's what we're talking about today. Two other steps were also recommended, but they're separate from, each step is a separate part of the process, and as we investigate each further step, we'll be making, asking council for more decisions on those. But this is the first step, and it creates an arts district ordinance. So I have a PowerPoint that I'll go through, a brief history of why, why is your economic development director talking about the creative economy and an arts district, and then move into why an arts district ordinance is part of that, and then go through the actual specifics of the arts district ordinance, so we'll understand what that is offering to that area of the city. So first of all, the creative economy as an economic development initiative, and I do apologize, y'all have heard this many times, but I just wanted to reemphasize why we're doing this. Really, we see human creativity as the ultimate resource in terms of economic development and economic diversification, particularly of the future. We know that the capital-intensive manufacturing uses nationwide have really changed, and we see where the growth industries are is where human creativity is used, where thinking and knowledge-based economy are being used. We also know that that will help retain and attract professionals to this area, and they're part of that growth sector of making those businesses and those entrepreneurial activities succeed. Also, when you look at what Williamsburg is now, we're very much rocket, or based on two main industries, which are education and hospitality, and they're our economic engines, and we certainly aren't going to ignore them. I've said that over and over as all the parts of my economic development work. We know that's our engine. We want it to prosper and grow. We see this as an extremely complementary way to diversify the economy, because it will not harm those education and hospitality industries. It will enhance them in a couple different ways. One, it provides a non-intrusive type of business with these creative economy businesses. These are office-type businesses, and with the artist businesses, you know, studio work would be involved, but it's not big manufacturing that we, doesn't fit here in the city of Williamsburg. And also, in terms of the tourism part of it, we know an arts district will probably not be the driver, the reason people come to Williamsburg, but it will be an additional aspect to the visitor's experience, so that they may want to come back and stay longer. aspect to the visitor's experience, so that they may want to come back and, and stay longer. So we did some research on the creative economy, and, and across the board, it increases vitality of neighborhoods and districts. It helps retain those creative workers who typically have higher rates of self-employment, they're more educated, they're entrepreneurial, they earn direct income from this creative business economy that they do, so they're bringing wealth and jobs to the city. And it also attracts firms that, that use this human resource. So you can start to create the buzz, and y'all will remember Richard Florida's Rise of the Creative Classes when this was first started to, to be studied. And so it does attract other firms to your city. But why an arts district? And as y'all know, we are part of a Dillon, we are a Dillon Rule state, so we can only do what the General Assembly grants us the ability to do. And in 2009, they did say that it was a good idea for cities and counties, all localities, to look at arts districts, and, and four have been formed across the state. So it's a tool that we're allowed to do. We see some direct benefits, too. It can increase revenue for existing businesses in that area with increased traffic and increased opportunity. Also, we hope to get new revenue from new businesses that will be attracted to this area. Also, this area of the city that, that we're talking about has a higher commercial vacancy rate than, than we've seen historically. And, and part of that is the recession, part of that is also the flight to the suburbs. Williamsburg really is experiencing, or Williamsburg did not experience that flight to the suburbs after World War II, when most cities did experience it. But now, we all know the counties are growing quite a bit and offering a competing product, whether it's office space, housing, or, or other things, retail. And so we know we're just one, one piece of the game, so we want to make our, our property seem more competitive in that marketplace. And then the general thing about just increased vitality for an area. There's lots of indirect benefits. We'd have the creative workforce and entrepreneurs, young professionals, help vitalize in a very important mixed-use neighborhood in the city, help attract tenants to that neighborhood, support the workforce of our existing businesses. And what this is talking about is, is some of our big employers have quite a few creative professionals, creative economy professionals who work for them. And due to their seasonal work, or just due to their passion, they do a lot of freelancing and, and other activities, and this could be a place where they could live and, and enjoy that sort of entrepreneurial work there. And, and I keep talking about entrepreneurism, and we, and we're just convinced that's the, the wave of economic development success of the future, and this provides a platform for that in small businesses. Jack has already covered the timeline of how we got here, as, as he said, so this just, just goes through that process, starting with the rezoning in 2008, and then moving through, we researched, does this make sense? We intuitively think this makes sense. William &amp; Mary helped us quantify that the creative economy was a benefit to the city, to the, the community, to its vitality, but also to its tax base. And then, as I mentioned, the General Assembly in July 2009 said we could create arts districts. And I'll, I'll back up here a little bit. There are many types of tax incentive ordinances that the General Assembly will let localities adopt and create. Most people are probably familiar with enterprise zones, and those are, are areas where these tax breaks are available to, to businesses who locate there. There's also revitalization zones, or there's tourism zones, so there's several things that the, that the, or a handful, that the General Assembly says we can do as a locality. But the Arts and Cultural District really fit in with our creative economy and really matched, like I said, our existing industries and enhanced our existing community. And Jack's gone over the rest. We had a task force that met, and I forgot in the beginning to thank, there's several members of the task force in the audience, and I hesitate to name them all, I know there's at least half a dozen, but I don't want to, to forget anyone, but they're, they're listed in the report, and y'all remember when we presented that, that they were very involved, and have remained involved, and are eager to keep helping us move this forward. So in May, we released the report. In August, city, you know, Jack's gone through this, the goals and initiative process. And so we've ended up now at the point where we're asking council to look at this arts district ordinance. The EDA has reviewed the ordinance and, and endorsed it and recommends approval as well. So what is an arts district ordinance? It really accomplishes two things. It designates a physical area of the city as a district, as an arts and cultural district, which then allows us to legally establish economic development incentives to new and expanding businesses who qualify as a creative business. And I'll get into those details as I move forward. But really, it's, it's giving us permission to offer these tax breaks, tax incentives, to encourage people to look at that area, and hopefully give that area a competitive advantage to, to the, to the counties and the surrounding area, that, that those type of businesses would look there to locate. I do want to emphasize, the ordinance does not change any existing land use rights. So everything is maintained, there's no change in terms of how you can use your property there. That includes zoning, architectural review, building codes, and, and all other city code regulations. Those still remain in place, this is just an overlay that offers an incentive if a business chooses to locate there, if a landlord chooses to rent to that business. So it's, it's totally up to the private market to make this happen. We're, we're extending the tool to try to encourage it, but the private market has to make the final decisions and, and decide whether it makes sense for them. And here's the map of the arts district that, that has been drawn. I do want to emphasize, I had many discussions with Mr. Robert Casey, or Reverend Robin Casey, who owns what's commonly called Casey Field, and can I, I can point to that, this area? And after a lot of discussions with him in the past week, he reminded us that when we had talked about this arts district, when it was, when the drawing was published in the report, when it was covered in the press, we had a circle around it, kind of, you know, we didn't know exactly what the boundary was going to be, but it did not include Casey Field at that time. Well, I think it would be great to include Casey Field. Reverend Casey and I discussed it quite a bit, and, and he does not agree. He has no plans, he or his, the other property owners have no plans to do anything there, and he did request that it be removed from the district. It also is not, is zoned residential, is it RS2, RS2? It's zoned RS2, which does not include that artist live-work space qualification, whereas the other residential up here, RS3, does allow that art, artist live-work space. So I felt like I, I wanted to share that with you, because I felt those were legitimate comments that he made. He did agree, though, that his LB2 property, I believe in this area, that that made sense to be in the district. Okay, so who's eligible for these incentives? We have two categories of businesses that we've identified, we feel make sense to attract to the city and, and to the arts district. One is probably what you traditionally think of as an artist business, so someone who's a painter, a sculptor, a writer, a musician, you know, sort of those visual performing artists, the things we typically think of when we think of arts and arts organizations. The second one is, I felt it was in the task force, that it's really important to broaden it to this creative economy, because this is really about creativity and knowledge, and we think this is the, the future success of not only our city, but this country, is that innovation and that knowledge. So we've come up with a definition that talks about a business that uses innovation, knowledge, and information, individual creativity, skill, and talent to create wealth and jobs. So that's pretty broad. So we decided to add a few categories. Of course, it's not limited to these categories, but just to give you a feel for what could qualify under here. It would be advertising, architecture, arts and antiques, designing computer games or software, culinary arts, crafts, design, designer fashion, film and video, music, performing arts, publishing, TV and radio. So you see some of those things that typically make sense as performing a visual artist, but also we've broadened it into that knowledge-based economy. Some other things I could think of, software engineers, antique shops, that's mentioned, marketing firms, research and technology, so people who are, are doing research and technology, and, and we'd love to see some spin-off from the college for that, that could turn into some businesses in the city. So those are, are some of the areas. We did exempt a few things. We exempted any, particularly in culinary arts, if you thought about it, we exempted a chain restaurant that has three or more sites, or a franchise restaurant. We felt, you know, I certainly eat at Subway and the other places, but we felt that wasn't a true innovative culinary arts type of restaurant, so we, we put those exceptions on it. We also did say that it did not include your traditional or office uses, like real estate lawyers, doctors, that that was, that was not part of the, the creative economy under this sort of intent. So we know what kinds of businesses are eligible for these incentives, but also wanted to talk about the fact, we, we wanted to include our existing businesses to have an opportunity, if they expand, to qualify for these, these incentives. So new businesses, that definition is pretty clear. That's a, a business in those, in one of those categories that does not currently have a location in the city of Williamsburg. An expanded business would be a business under one of those categories that already exists here, but it does one of the following. It either invests a minimum of $10,000 of capital investment in the business, so you're, not your day-to-day working capital, but actual investment in equipment or in improvements to the, to the property. And then, or, and this is an or, creates at least one new full-time job at the business. So we wanted, yeah, these aren't terribly high thresholds, but we wanted to, to show a serious intent of expansion, and we felt when you did that, then you should qualify for these incentives, based on that increased revenue you would bring in after expansion. So one thing that was discussed at the EDA heavily that I want to point out is, how do you define one new full-time job? So I've talked to the, the EDA and the, the city attorney about that, and we are going to model that after a, a state enterprise zone program, but that can be done administratively through the application process. And basically, you want to make sure it truly is a job that's, that's going to be around more than a couple weeks, so you show that commitment, that it's, it's 35 hours a week, and it's been a certain amount of weeks of the year, probably 45 or so, you know, something that shows it, a job that is, is longstanding. And I already pointed out, the expanding business incentives will apply only to the increased tax revenue after their expansion, and that'll make more sense in a moment when I talk about the, the dollar amount of the incentives. We really wanted this to be, to do no harm to the existing tax revenue in the city, so we're not forfeiting any existing tax revenue that we collect. So all that remains the same. What we're doing is we're rebating a portion of future tax revenue. So we're saying, we hope these incentives will attract attention to these businesses coming to the city, so we'll forego a little bit of some of the taxes they pay, but we'll gain a portion of new taxes when they arrive here. So that's the concept, not losing any existing tax revenue, and you're just rebating a portion of future tax revenue. So there are three incentives in place. One is on the business license, it's a rebate, so they would actually pay the business license, and then we would rebate it to them over a five-year period. In the first year, it would be a rebate of 100%, then decreasing to 80%, 60%, 40%, 20% over five years. And then businesses, or many businesses who would qualify for, as a creative economy business or an arts business, will be collecting sales tax from their customers. So what we've said is, 1% of the sales tax that your customer pays comes back to the city from the state. So you collect 5%, and then the, the state, and that goes to the state, and then the state returns 1% to the city. So we're saying, we'll offer a benefit to the business equal to the amount of, of that 1% of the customer's payment of the tax. And again, that's on a decreasing scale, again, starting at 100%, ending at 20% in year five. And then we're offering, or suggesting we offer zoning and building fee exemptions at 100%. So any zoning or building fee the, the business may need to pay in order to, to operate that business over those five years would be waived, would be exempted. So that sounds great in the abstract, but what does that mean for a, a potential creative economy business? So we've actually provided four scenarios to give you an idea of what dollar amounts we're talking about, and, and some examples of, of businesses that may be interested in taking advantage of this. So the first one we outlined is a watercolor painter who lives, works, and sells his paintings in the district. So he's taking advantage of that live-work allowance under the zoning ordinance and locating there. In this scenario, we say he's leasing that space from somebody, using it as residential and commercial space, and grossing $50,000 a year in sales. So as you apply the numbers, he pays a B-pole fee of 20 cents per 100 on his gross sales. So we've, we've calculated those down, and you'll see over five years, that's a $300 return to him. And then the sales tax that he collects from his customers, that benefit after five years is $1,500. And we estimated he would probably get a zoning permit, or, yeah, zoning permit for his sign that he'd want to put out, saying his gallery is there. And that is a, we estimate $110 for that. So you can see the total over five years is $119, $1,910. So that's, sort of gives you a sense of someone at, at that level of sales, what they would benefit from. Another one would be, let's say a film producer decides to come in and, and rent commercial space in the district and sell his film services. And let's say he grosses $150,000 a year. After all those calculations are made, his B-pole's a little bit different, it's 58 cents per 100 as a professional service, there's no sales tax on professional services, so that line is blank, and you can see that all totals to about $2,700. And again, none of this is existing revenue, because these would be new businesses coming into the city, so we've never collected this revenue before. Another scenario we wanted to share was, let's say we have a furniture maker who, who works and sells what he, you know, he, he builds the furniture and sells it in a building that he happens to own, and he grosses $250,000 per year in furniture sales. After calculating all that, I mean, that's a much larger gross sales per year, that number comes out at about $9,000 over a five-year period. And again, about the not, you know, we're foregoing some future revenue. Remember, in year two, we're, we're not giving back 20% of that, and year three, we're, we're keeping 40% of that, and year four, 60, and in year five, 80%. So that's how we're, you know, by giving up a little bit, but we're still gaining additional revenue from, from a new business. And lastly, I want to talk about a bakery. A bakery came up quite often in the discussions, actually, all around town, when I'm, I'm out and about, I hear people say they wish we had a bakery. So I, a scenario is, we could have an LLC partnership of two people, they decide to purchase a property in the district at market rate, they construct a 900-square-foot commercial building for a, a custom bakery, so they're not a chain bakery or a franchise, they're, they're baking these things as custom work there, and they gross $175,000 per year selling desserts and pastries. And when you run through that, of course, there's, you'll see their zoning and permit fee waivers a little higher, because they, they have to pay for, there's some building permits involved there, because they're building a new structure. And that benefit comes out at about $6,800 a year. And so that covers what the ordinance does. Again, I think, I think we'll have a handful of questions from, from you in the public, but I'll end it with the, the picture of the district as it was drawn. Again, this still includes the Casey Field that I, I explained, Mr. Casey's concerns about that.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you very much, Michelle.
Sure.
Terrific presentation. This time, we'll come back to council for any questions they might have of you, and then we'll give you a public comment. Paul, do you have any questions?
If I may, and I can appreciate you not wanting to run the risk of trying to name anybody, or everybody in the audience who participated in the focus group or on the task force, but would it be possible just to ask those people to stand so we can recognize them? We have a lot of people in this community who do a lot of volunteer work, and oftentimes they get little or no recognition. I think it'd just be a nice opportunity to say thank you.
So everyone who participated, we'd appreciate if you'd stand up. Thank you.
Michelle, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned three steps that were recommended by the consultant. Could you talk for just a moment as to how those three steps relate to each other, and whether any one is dependent upon the other, or if they are independent actions that can be taken incrementally or in a total package?
Great question. And I would emphasize, while the- And I would emphasize, while the consultant was certainly heavily involved, our task force was also very much involved with those three steps. So, I don't want to diminish their sense of developing those as well. The quick answer is, they are not dependent on each other. We could choose to do one out of three, two out of three, and still be moving forward towards this concept. Do you want me to go into the three?
The point of the question is that, is it necessary to do this in order to accomplish something else down the road? Or is this just one standalone component? Whether we do it or not, we could still choose to do or not the other two.
The answer is yes. We could, it could easily stand alone. Council could decide that passing this arts district ordinance is a great idea, and we do that, and then we do nothing else, because these other things don't make sense when we investigate them, or vice versa. If the ordinance doesn't happen, we could still look at the other activities as well.
And regarding the question about the total boundary of the district, if the Casey Fields were not included in the original arts district designation from the ordinance, and if they were ever rezoned at a future date for whatever reason or whatever purpose or whoseever direction, is there any reason why at that point, they couldn't then be added back into the district?
Absolutely not. They could be added in at any time. I'll make sure Chris Shelton agrees with me on that, but that can be amended, only by city council.
Right. But I think it's just a useful point to recognize that it isn't zoned similarly to the primary section of the area. Is there any other part of the arts district that carries a different zoning?
There are three zoning types here, and I may have to ask Reed to help me, but it's the RS2, which is that residential area that allows the live-work space, and that is primarily in this area.
Well, RS2 is what Casey Field is.
I'm sorry, it's RS3. So, that's the RS3 that allows that live-work space. Then, there's an area called LB2, which is the majority of Richmond Road, kind of, and it gets a little larger here, that is zoned limited business too, and that's a mixed use of business uses. And then, there's a more intense business zoning, is that B2?
B3.
Oh, sorry, B3. See, I need the planning director to clarify all that. So, this is a B3 area here, and I believe this is as well.
So, the Casey Field are the only RS2?
Right.
Okay. Now, I just want to, if you could clarify one point. You mentioned in one of the slides, and there were several, that some businesses are not eligible for the tax rebate, such as doctors, lawyers, and other office uses. Can you speak to what impact the ordinance has on a landlord's ability to rent to any of those occupations or businesses, or the access that an individual engaging in that business would have to this district if that's where they chose to set up shop?
So, you're talking about businesses who do not qualify under the definition?
Correct.
Absolutely no change. Nothing is different than how it works today for landlords in those businesses. Everything remains the same.
So, they have complete equal access. The only difference is, they're not eligible for the tax rebate?
Exactly.
And you talked about zoning and building fee exemption. Does that mean that those permit fees are not paid at all, as opposed to the tax which is rebated?
Exactly.
Okay. And just one other question. What would you say, if someone came to you and said, "You know, gosh, this just doesn't seem fair. A new business can come in here, and they get these tax rebates, and I've had my business, and I've been here, and I've been doing business in the city, or I'm in a different part of the city. Why can't I get this?" How would we explain that to them?
I think there's a couple of different explanations. The first is, anyone, assuming they could find the land or lease the property that worked for them, could move into this district and be eligible for the incentives. In terms of the existing businesses who are already there, that's why we included the expanded business qualification. So, if they do grow, and it's not a huge threshold, it is a threshold, that they show some investment or create a job, that their increased tax payments would be eligible for this district. But we really needed to hold, just from a fiscally sound sense, we needed to hold the city's existing revenue level and not dip into anything that's currently being collected.
And I do have one other question. It might be for you, it might be for the city attorney. If the city was interested in offering this tax rebate program, or financial incentive, economic development incentive in the state of Virginia, is there any way to do that without designating a physical area as some form of district through an ordinance?
No.
Okay. So, the purpose of enacting this ordinance is solely to get that tax rebate, and that's the only way we can provide the rebate, is by designating the district?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Scott, come back.
Oh, yeah. I suspect this may be a lengthy discussion.
Paul, a tough act to follow. Thank you for clearing up several things, especially how private market will play into this in that it carries the weight of this entire ordinance in determining which parcels may be included. Also, I appreciate your flexibility in accounting for Mr. Casey's concern. Do we have any, I mean, discussion later on how that will play in?
Yeah, I think when it comes back to council for discussion, if a motion were put on the floor to do this, that could be either part of the motion or it could be an amendment to the motion if we went there. So, there are mechanisms, procedural mechanisms to do that, if we wish.
Generally, I thank you for making this so clear.
Michelle, appreciate all your hard work on this and the EDAs. It's come a long way. Can you discuss a little bit how it came to be that we picked this boundary?
Sure, sure. Happy to.
The process that got us here?
Sure. And we outlined all of that in the report, for those of you who need late-night reading. But the, we looked at five districts of the city, and the way we chose those districts was four of them had this live-work space zoning ability. So, they were the, now I'm getting my mind confused, the RS3? They were in the RS3. So, that occurs in four different areas of the city. So, we looked at those areas, all four of those areas, because we knew that our zoning ordinance already allowed the ability for artists to live and work there. So, that's how we identified four of them. The fifth one we identified, because we had been working with This Century Art Gallery, knew their plans for Paper Mill Creek. They were part of our focus groups. And so, we thought, you know, that's a substantial artist activity and building that they're proposing. So, we also looked at Paper Mill Creek, even though it didn't have that zoning, but we felt it was worth looking at, given their interest in building something there. Then, we did a pros and cons analysis, and really, the task force went through that through several meetings, talked about it, also relied on the consultants who have expertise across the nation and where these arts districts thrive. So, I could hit some of the highlights of why this one was chosen.
Please.
One is, it just has a wonderful charm to it. The bungalows and the houses there, and it's quite quaint, and it seemed to just fit into something that artists and visitors, it would appeal to people. It's a very appealing neighborhood. It also is already a mixed-use neighborhood. It also has a lot of commercial use and residential use, so that was a good blend. It's also on a public transportation line for both the trolley and the bus system. It's also adjacent to the Williamsburg Shopping Center, Walgreens, Staples, other uses that anyone who would live there could easily have access to, walking access to. It's also close to downtown. While we realize that not every visitor would choose to walk, it's not quite a mile, and there are many arts districts in other cities around the nation who have that, about that distance from a downtown. So, that didn't put, it wasn't too far away from downtown to be easily accessible by the, by visitors or customers. I think that, oh, one last point. We've seen higher vacancy rates there in the commercial buildings than historically have happened in that area of the city. And we know, as I mentioned before, there's several reasons for that. Mostly, it's because there's so much increased competition, a lot of it in the counties now for commercial space. So, we wanted to be very proactive and help landlords be able to attract people to rent those commercial spaces.
You had given some scenarios about how the business entrepreneurs that locate there get some tax rebates for the first five years. Describe, if you will, if this is successful, what could be the effect on property values in the area?
Sure. All our research shows that when an arts district comes about, property values increase. And of course, that can be a catch-22, when the, you know, the artist can be priced out. But across the board, property values increase in an arts district, and it's because there's increased traffic, there's increased interest. Higher demand for people renting space there increases property values.
The, when was the final draft of this ordinance made public?
The first time it was made public?
The final draft?
The final draft. Meeting packets went out Thursday. A prior draft was made public in December.
Can you, what kind of outreach did we make to the residents as this process went along, to the property owners particularly, because they're not all live in the district? Did we make to get them involved in the process here in the latter part of, the latter stages of where we are today?
In the latter stages, we made a, I made a public present, I'll just go back to December. I made a public presentation to city council with the timeline at your work session, so that was televised in public. I also have maintained a list of about 200 emails of people who've been interested or I knew had property in there who had attended our public meeting in March. And so, periodically throughout this whole process, I'd email them. So, they were all emailed in December telling them the timeline and that an ordinance was coming in January to city council. And then, there was quite a bit of buzz and interest in the ordinance in the past week. So, I've received several emails offered to, well, I'll back up. There was also an interested citizen at the December meeting who expressed some concern. She was a property owner, and I reached out to her with some phone calls and emails back in December. And then, I've had email, mostly email conversations. A lot, some people did want to talk to me on the phone, and I've had several of those conversations. It's been a very busy week conversing with, like you said, because they're not all residents there. There are a lot of people who own the property. So, we've had a lot of dialogue by email and telephone.
Good. And a question maybe for somebody else, but could we approve the concept or approve the ordinance of an art district without picking where we put it? I mean, and then coming back?
No, you have to define the boundaries of the arts district.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Oh, just, and just to add, you made a presentation to neighborhood council?
I'm sorry, you're right. Last Saturday, Reed and I made a presentation about this ordinance to the neighborhood council. We had also asked them ahead of that meeting to email the actual ordinance to all their members, who in turn emailed them out to their neighborhoods, and then had a quite good conversation with them Saturday.
Judy?
Thank you, Michelle. This actually might be a question for Reed. We passed this live-work ordinance in 2008, correct? Has anyone in this area taken advantage of that? So, what we're trying to do here is provide an incentive so that somebody might be inclined to take advantage of it. Okay.
Exactly. And I think the next steps are, we need to talk about how we market this ordinance. Certainly, website marketing, you know, typical economic development tool, we'll market it. But you're exactly right. We're hoping this will attract more attention and demand for use of properties there.
That's all for now.
One other question?
Yeah.
Michelle, Mr. Pons asked a question about what were the characteristics of this district that set it apart from the other four that were considered? Was the proximity to the college a part of that as well?
Yes, thank you. I did speak about the proximity to downtown and visitors and residents, but it was also the proximity to the college. You're exactly right. The, it's been an effort of the city to look at student-oriented retail and community-oriented retail. We think they really are much the same often. So, the idea that not only students would be interested in activities going on here, but faculty would be interested in living and renting in this type of area. And maybe even being entrepreneurs.
Also, following up on that point, if I recollect, I think the fact that this is also on the transportation route for Williamsburg area transit and for the trolley both mean that it's very accessible from other parts of the community.
Exactly.
I have several questions for you too, to follow up. One of these is a follow-up. My understanding is that sort of no business that could locate in this area now would be restricted from locating in this area by this ordinance.
Not at all.
And any business that is restricted from being here now is still restricted from being here. But the incentive structure does put restrictions, restricts some businesses. But that's a restriction only for the incentive program. Is that correct?
Exactly. That restriction is only for the incentives. It does not apply at all to what our existing zoning and other regulations allow to be located there.
In what way is this ordinance different from a zoning ordinance or an ARB ordinance or the rental inspection district ordinance? What, how does this differ?
Well, the overall main difference is, it's not changing at all the way people can use their land. It's putting no limitations or increases, for that matter, in the uses that can be done on this land. So, it has nothing to do with land use. It's merely an economic development tool to encourage people to look at this area and consider it as a location. Then, they need to negotiate all that with the private market under our existing zoning, ARB, all our existing regulations. And I don't know, did Chris want to add to that?
Okay, great. Couple more quick questions. The role of ArtSpace. Tell us a little bit about ArtSpace. And as I recollect, they do both, they provide consulting services and development. They're a developer as well. How did we use them, and what's been their role? Who are they and what's been their role?
ArtSpace is a nonprofit organization based in Minneapolis, and they've been around since the '70s. And they're considered the premier expert on arts districts and live-work space for artists. So, we brought them in in the capacity to just talk about, is it feasible for the city of Williamsburg to look into an arts district? Do we have an area that seems to make sense? And they interviewed hundreds, as we said, hundreds of people around the community to talk about this. So, it was merely a consulting role. We hadn't, they do provide a service to offer development of buildings, primarily art, live space, but that is not how we hired them.
Thank you. I have one final question. This maybe is for Chris. Does this ordinance create any options for the use of eminent domain by the city that don't exist presently?
No, it does not. All this ordinance does is create the district and provide the incentives. It does not deal in any way with eminent domain. There is no change to eminent domain in this district. It's the same across the city.
And what's the constitutionality of eminent domain for economic development purposes?
The city of Williamsburg has the right under the state code to condemn property for public uses. The city does not have the right to condemn property for private uses. The city specifically by statute cannot condemn property and convey it to the EDA for purposes of use for private use. And so, we can condemn property, the city can condemn property for schools, for parks, for roads, for utilities, but not for private projects.
For economic development purposes.
That's correct.
And that's the result of the Connecticut case a few years ago.
Result of the Kelo decision and a change in state law in 2007 responding to that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council at this time?
Just a real quick one, if I may. There was one property owner that asked to be taken out. Were there any others to be removed from this district?
Not directly. I mean, I'll be frank, there were a lot of concerns and questions, but nobody directly asked me to remove their land.
Thank you very much, Michelle. At this point, I will ask for public comments, and I have four speakers' cards. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure that they, this is the order they came in, but I will do it in this way. As you come forward, if you wish to speak, would you please state your name and address? I'll again remind you that typically, we limit comments to three minutes. The first card I have is from John Whitley.
Hi, I'm John Whitley. I live at 110 Governor Berkeley.
I live at 110 Governor Berkeley Road, and I am supportive of this concept. Three reasons. What better place on earth to be moving in the direction of a creative economy than the city of Williamsburg? Look about, whether it's the college, going to Williamsburg, or whatever else that's happening, there is a sense of creativity. Secondly, it places up under this stool of economic development that third leg, because we're looking at a balanced piece there, not only of hospitality, of entertainment, but then we have this piece, and I think it speaks well for us. The third piece you're not even aware of, Michelle is, and I mentioned it at the NCW meeting last Saturday. There's a lot of economic development envy with our neighbors, James City County and York County. I sit with pleasure on the Greater Williamsburg Chamber Tourism Alliance Economic Progress Committee. This concept was presented by Michelle to this group. Keep in mind, the economic development directors of York County and of James City County sit there also. And as this concept came forward, it was the snapping of the neck, oh my God, why didn't we think of this? So yes, there is economic development envy within our midst. I do believe that this will afford us the opportunity to move forward. I do like what you said, Doug. You raised a question about, is this district, which to me said, there's nothing that says that there has to be only one arts district in the city of Williamsburg. I commend Michelle. I commend the EDA, and I hope that we see this with favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Next speaker's card I have is Bob Oliver.
Hello, my name is Bob Oliver, 11743 Roth Highway in Surrey, Virginia. I'm an owner of multiple properties in the designated Lafayette Street area district. My concern with today's plans to vote on this ordinance are twofold. First, why have the property owners not been directly brought into the process? And second, what is the real motivation of the city as it pertains to this area and the belief that affordable housing is or can be part of the arts district equation? Mr. Whit has graciously provided me with what appears to be all the notification documents relating to this issue to date. However, what does not seem to exist is any reference to the notification of the property owners. There's neither doubt nor argument that property owners were included as part of the neighborhood focus group as early as March 2010 and on through the process until the announcement of May 2010. However, during that timeframe, the entire process was conceptual, and few specifics were established. I would contend that once four out of the five potential districts areas had been eliminated and the Lafayette area had been established as an arts district, it was incumbent upon the city to actively notify and engage the owners and let them know how the action or changes would, could, or would, would or would not affect them and involve them in the process going forward. I would submit that this process has moved forward in spite of the owners, with their vested interest taking last place to offerings and zoning being devised for the benefit of artists as far back as 2006. Granted, this is a tax incentive overlay and does not require written notification, but perhaps if you liken it to a developer coming into town with a plan to build a large project within the city limits, what's not required that he, she, he or she have town hall meetings with the affected property owners before plans are announced. It certainly is good business practice, good community building, and certainly is respectful of those owners most affected by the plans. Secondly, I quote from the May 7 report for Site D Richmond Road Lafayette Street Con's column. "Many homes in the area rentals and students occupied. Owners may see little or no incentive to sell or reinvest if their cash flow is positive as rental." To me, that statement by itself precludes a belief that affordable housing, as suggested in the December 8, 2010 Daily Press article, is an option for the live-work concept in the designated arts district. Rents typically do provide positive cash flow in this area, and unless the city intends to subsidize the artist with more than just tax incentives, such as lease guarantee, few starving artists will be able to afford the rents in this area. Now, my question is, when that reality hits home with the city after complaints of high prices, what can we expect from the city in the form of imposed regulations, restrictions, or nudges intended to make the area more attainable to artists? We deserve to have these and other answers, questions answered before any vote is taken. In closing, this may well be a good thing for the owners, and I suspect it quite likely will be, but as far as I can tell, no effort has been expended by the city or EDA to make that apparent. I implore you to forego any plans to vote on this ordinance until every effort has been made to directly contact all owners in the designated arts district who are affected by these plans and afford the city the opportunity to learn what the owners' concerns are and allow the owners the opportunity to express their concerns as well as offer insights that may have been overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Next card I have is Dick Schreiber.
Mayor Hallman, members of the council. I'm Dick Schreiber, president and CEO of the Greater Williamsburg Chamber in Tourism Alliance, an organization that represents 850 members, many of which are located in the city. For several years now, the alliance has participated in the work of the Core Group on the Arts, work that has led to the ordinance that is before you today. We are pleased to have been included for two reasons. First, we are committed to the city's activities in support of redevelopment. And second, we believe that a redevelopment project based on the creative economy is a very meaningful positioning for such an activity. Redevelopment is a necessary part of the economic development of every community. Williamsburg is no different. In fact, redevelopment was responsible for one of the cornerstones of the city, Colonial Williamsburg. Without the forward thinking of Reverend W.A.R. Goodman and John D. Rockefeller, Jr., Williamsburg would be a very different place today than it is. The arts district project can have its own long-term impact. The alliance commends the work the city is doing related to this project and others that have recently been initiated. We believe these efforts will strengthen the city in the long run. The creative economy can play a vital role. Williamsburg already has a strong presence in the arts with many talented individuals as well as two major institutions, Colonial Williamsburg and the College of William &amp; Mary. As you know, the alliance has been committed to the arts for a number of years now. In fact, we have designated September as a month that we will promote as a time for visitors to come to Williamsburg to enjoy many arts events. We have committed over $140,000 to market September as Arts Month in Williamsburg. This district will build on cultural strengths that already exist. We will not be starting from scratch. We believe that identifying a district that will attract businesses that share a creative thrust is a significant step in urging the next generation of entrepreneurs to call Williamsburg home for their families and their businesses. Every study that has been done suggests that this is the group the area should seek to attract. The alliance executive committee at its January 12 meeting unanimously resolved to support this ordinance and the continued redevelopment efforts of the city. Your actions are important not only to the city but to the entire historic triangle. On behalf of our membership, we urge passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. The next card I have is Mr. Robert Casey.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a handout to you all.
Yes, sir. Miss Scott, if you would.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm Robert Casey. I live at 721 Richmond Road in Williamsburg, and I'm one of the owners of what commonly call Casey Fields, which includes 700 Lafayette Street, 715, 717, 721, and probably a part of 727 Richmond Road. I attended the open meeting about the arts district when we had a reasoning when the consultants came and was part of one of the focus groups. And then after it was all said and done and proposal was made, I met with Michelle and Gene Zidner and some other person whose name was--
Monty Mason.
Monty Mason. That's right. Thank you. And we had a considerable discussion, and I was assured that this project did not include Casey Fields. So I was surprised, a little bit shocked, when I saw the Saturday Gazette and saw the map which included Casey Fields when I had put that behind me, I don't know how many months ago it was. So I called Michelle on Monday and talked with her and asked if she remembered that, and I asked her to be removed, and she was kind enough to draw this map that you all now have before you, that shows how it would look. Put that on that screen or not?
No, there's no way to put it on the screen. Sorry.
It shows you how it would be if Casey Fields were not included. As you see by the discussion so forth, all the houses on that property are zoned RS2, which does not allow for workplace artists. And I think those houses are so small that I don't know what kind of artwork they would do. I grew up in one of them with my two brothers and parents and three bedrooms, one bath and a kitchen. It was supposed to be a temporary house that lasted for 20 years anyway, so I just don't think it's feasible. I know that Casey Fields is very attractive to lots of folks, and every few years, someone from the city or someone poses something to do with it. Last time, I think Carlton Ebbe had a plan that the city asked to throw up, which had something to do with it. And a few years before that, there was a proposal to run a road from Brook Street through the fields over to the far end of Lafayette Street, and I'm not sure what was worth for that one. But we don't have any plans particularly developed at the moment, but when we do, I think we will present a comprehensive plan in which City Council will have, I'm sure, ample time to discuss and rebuff and change and whatever, if that ever happens. Probably won't happen in my lifetime, but some of my children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, maybe before you're a kid today. Anyway, I would appreciate if you would, since I was told that it was not going to be included, and Michelle was willing to take it out, I would appreciate if you all would exclude the Casey Fields from this particular piece of property. Seems to me that there's all the other space there. If we have enough artists to fill it all up and you still need Casey Fields, we would have considered that at the time, but I don't believe you need that much space at the moment, especially when it's zoned, so you can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle, a technical question for you. Casey Field is zoned RS2, so that the proposal would take that out. Would it, what are the houses across the street on Lafayette Street? Are they--
They are also zoned RS2.
RS2.
So there's a line about right, is it right here, Reed?
Okay, so that is the line between the two zoning districts.
Right.
That's helpful. Okay. Thank you very much. I have one more speaker's card before we open it to anyone who wishes to speak. Bill Dell has both arts district and neighborhood issues, and I assume this is the arts district part of your two-phased discussion with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Bill Dell, and I live at 322 Indian Springs. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear again the discussion on the arts district. I think it's safe to say that the proposal has generated a great deal of interest, and its success will be of great benefit to both the residents and the city. On the surface, it appears to be a no-brainer, and under other circumstances, the proposal would have my full support. However, before you move forward on this, I think that you first must solve the student housing problem. Now, the first question that comes to mind, of course, is what in the world has student housing got to do with the creation of an arts district? Well, I say that because unfortunately, as was brought out during the NCW and Neighborhood Council discussions this past Saturday, the proposal is not without potential difficulty with student housing. Although I don't know the exact figures, I believe it's safe to say that as many as 60% of those houses, and I've heard estimates as high as 80%, if not more, are, that are encompassed by the proposed district, particularly along the Lafayette Corridor, are owned by investors or student parents and are used for student rental housing. If the arts district is developed as designed, and it is as successful as we hope it will be, most of those residences will no longer be available for student housing. If adequate provisions for this eventuality are not included in the overall plan for the arts district, a result is going to be an unacceptable increased demand for student housing in our other in-town neighborhoods. There are a lot of good ideas out here, but anything that takes away student housing is not one of them. This council and the residents of Williamsburg should make no mistake about the vulnerability and the continued encroachment of rental units in our neighborhoods. Investors and/or parents willing to spend upwards of $445,000 to purchase housing for students place all of our neighborhoods at risk. These prices are fact. 202 Indian Springs, as a matter of public record, sold to student parents for $445,000 just in the last month. So residents of Yorkshire, Holly Hills, The Woods, The Coats, Portland, and others, residents of those particular areas and other areas in the city that have been sitting back and saying, this is not going to happen to me, I'd better have another thought about it. Several weeks ago, I came before council and presented a proposal for you to work with the college in identifying suitable housing in which students wait-listed for on-campus housing could be assigned. This housing was identified and made available through previous council action. To date, I have received no response from council or the college regarding the proposal. Today, I stand before you requesting a formal response. If the plan is found to be acceptable, there are many of us standing by to assist the college and the city in working out implementation details and help smooth any rough spots. If the proposal is found to be acceptable or unacceptable to either the college or the city, I respectfully request a response as to the reasons the proposal could not be implemented. I'd like to close by saying I'm not opposed to the arts district. I think it's a good idea and concept. But again, anything that's going to take away student housing and force those students to look for housing in our other residential neighborhoods is not a good idea until we fix it, and there are ways that we can fix that problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. At this time, if anyone else wishes to address the issue, please come forward, state your name and address and--
Mayor Hallman and councilmen and women. I'm Jane Marvin. I'm a property owner. I'm also a local artist, so I see both sides of the coin. The arts district seems like an excellent idea, but what really bothers me is that you're taking away residents, similar to the gentleman that just spoke. And they're always talking about need for students, have need a place to live. Well, I happen to rent to somebody that works for Colonial Williamsburg. They like to ride their bicycle to work. And I think if you really did a tally, it would be interesting to see how many are students, how many work in other places. And then I know several families that are just families that have lived there for years and years. My in-laws happen to live there. They've lived there for like 30-some years, maybe more. And to take away this residential area is something that really should be considered. I looked at the website for ArtSpace. What they did, they had large buildings that they took over, like an old hospital that had been vacant for 20 years. They took over an old opera house, and these were all renovated into buildings where the artist would live and work. I don't understand how that's going to relate to our arts district, and I would like to understand that better. If there are vacant commercial areas, that seems to be an ideal place, but really not the residential area. And that concerns me. And as a property owner, I live in the county, and I have had no notice of this at all. I did finally contact Michelle, and she's put me on the email list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marvin. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Katie Ballard. I'm a master's student in public policy at a college, and I'll try not to be personally offended about nobody wanting to live near students. Think I'm a very good neighbor. First of all, I'd just like to speak to the information-- First of all, I'd just like to speak to the information sort of discussion that's going on. In my two years in Williamsburg, I have found it very easy to stay informed. I think that it is a two-sided coin, like the information has to be available, but it's also my responsibility as a resident and my responsibility as an interested citizen of Williamsburg to stay informed and to consume that information. And I have found that all of the information that's available has been very helpful and very informative, so I thank you for that. I have also attended many of the public forums and have found them very, very helpful. So, thanks. As far as the arts district, sort of anecdotally making my point, last weekend I went to Nashville, had a great time, went to this little neighborhood that was right by Vanderbilt, and it had, you know, little artist shops and second-run theater and, you know, places that you go in, and the person who makes the jewelry is sitting by the front door, and then you go and talk to them, and then they sell you a bunch of things, and boy, did I spend some money. And I would love, and I know a lot of students would also love, to have a place like that in Williamsburg where we could go and spend some money and spend some time and shop and eat and do schoolwork off of campus, because I know sometimes we just need to have a change of scenery. I think that this is a great idea, and I do not think that it would be a detriment to the neighborhood, and I don't think that it would risk losing a lot of student housing. If this turns out to be a neighborhood where a lot of students want to be, if it's similar to like this neighborhood next to Vanderbilt, housing will build up around these areas. You know, new housing opportunities will become available because there will be development opportunities there, which will further revitalize this neighborhood and help develop Williamsburg in an academic sense. So, thank you so much for your consideration and have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Anyone else who wishes to come forward? Please.
My name's Paul White, and I rent at 903 Richmond Road, which is actually the garage behind 901 Richmond Road. I originally started my architectural business looking for a small place to function. There are none in Williamsburg. There are no artist studios provided in Williamsburg. I think what you're proposing is a good idea. I've been there for seven years. I am not going to invest $10,000 in a 20 by 22-foot garage. I refurbished that whole structure for $6,000. Now, how am I supposed to be in business when I have to spend $10,000 to get a tax benefit? I'll move out of the, I'll move out of the city. I'll go somewhere else. You're not attracting artists. I've been there for, like I said, years. All that's down there is lawyers, there's a dentist, and some retail and hotel. What makes you think you're going to bring artists in? Now, what I propose, which I did earlier this morning, is you're sitting on a piece of land that was, I don't know if it was eminent domain, or you just tore down the old hotel. That can be converted over to an artist studio. I've shown small spaces. Artists don't need big spaces. I have my conference room and my practice area in a small two-car garage, and it functions. And it doesn't have to cost you arm and a leg. Artists don't have money. We're broke. I mean, look at the economy out there right now. How are you, I don't understand how you think an artist is going to come in and, you know, rent from somebody and live up above us or, and have this business. You know, most of these development things that they come up with are in warehouse areas and stuff that's been abandoned. They're quaint, yeah, they're a nice place to hang out. Williamsburg, where I'm at, come on. What are you going to do about the parking? How are you going to handle parking? I mean, I think the idea is great, but I don't think that's the place to do it, and I don't know if Williamsburg has the facilities or the neighborhood to do it in. We don't have the quaint old, like Richmond, you know, the tobacco warehouses or down by the, what's it called? Chalk of Bottom, yeah. We don't have it. What the hell are we trying to do? You know, that's all I've got to say. I, you know, I've been there for a long time, and I've seen people move in and out, and I don't think the little tax incentives that you're actually looking at are going to bring people. There are no, you know, your building, your building costs, your building permits. Basically, your sign permit is free, or not free, but your, for your ordinance. You go in, you give it to the RBA, they look at it, it's okay. You do have some construction costs, but that's minute in the granting scheme of things. You know, and they're payout over five years. You know, you get $1,000, that's five years.
Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you very much for your conceptual design for the Tioga property. That's useful. Thank you. Yes?
Good afternoon. I'm Sabrina Fairbanks. I live at 119 Berkeley Lane, and I own property right there on the line that goes behind the Casey Fields on With Avenue. Because first of all, thank you for having this opportunity for us to speak to you and for Michelle to answer some of our questions. And I'd also like to say that I support arts and I support artists. I look forward to the occasion every year, and I plan an annual girls' weekend to the Virginia Beach Neptune Festival, where I spend too much of our disposable income on jewelry art. But with that said, looking at the ordinance that are proposed, it seems to me like it's, you're being asked to vote on something that's a conceptual idea, might be a good idea, and the tax incentives, but a conspicuous piece that's missing from it are what would be the ordinance involving the property owners. And as I saw Michelle go through the steps, it seems to me that if I liken that to a business plan, they kind of like, I'll say this, designate the art district, talk about the tax incentives, and the artists will come. But I think the property owners aren't going to be supportive of this ordinance if we don't know what all the next steps are. And, you know, I appreciate the verbal assurances that you're not going to change the use, you know, what we can use the properties for, that you're not going to have deed restrictions in the future, that you're not going to resort to eminent domain, but unless that's written down somewhere, you know, they're just going to remain that verbal assurances. So I think you're being asked to vote on something that really is incomplete at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Adele Carpenter, and I am already an arts business owner in the proposed art district. I'm co-owner of Virginia Regional Ballet, and since we've been there now, this is our fourth year, and have seen a great amount of growth in that area and just in my arts business, and I know that Books-A-Million loves us there because all of the families go and have coffee while their children are dancing, and this will be a lot of time for them to be able to go and visit other things. Another thing that I would like to say about having an arts district is that the building and they will come, creative people like to be around other creative people, and I think that once we start to see that, that growth more will come, and hopefully maybe people that are at the college, instead of going and graduating and fleeing to Richmond or Charlottesville or these other areas, they will want to stay, and I think that's one of the main purposes, is for young entrepreneurship. I was also part of the task force that came, that helped with this concept, and in no way did we ever mean to take or, does it say that we are taking the power away from the landowners on who they can rent to? If they choose not to rent to a, an arts person or have a business out of their home, that's still their prerogative, and they still have that authority over their own properties, the way that I'm understanding it. Also with the ArtSpace and going on to their website, yes, that is a conceptual group where they do come in and build big things. The task force and the city has not agreed to bring them in at this time to do that. We're not trying to build some mega art center in downtown Williamsburg. We are just wanting for creative people to be able to go and have a place where they can live and work at the same time. Somebody said that they rent to somebody who works at Colonial Williamsburg, a lot of interpreters, they're included in, under that arts bracket, and so they would be able to get those incentives as being an interpreter at William, at Colonial Williamsburg. They don't have to have their business there, and part of ArtSpace came and talked about that, is that as a dancer, I can have that, live and work there. It doesn't mean I'm going to dance in my home or teach dance out of my home, but I can have a job dancing somewhere else in the Williamsburg area and be able to get those tax breaks. I'm going to rent my, you know, rent from that person. Doesn't mean I have to have my business from there. I think too, as an educator and teaching young children, I think that having an arts district in a place where these children can go and see people making a living and it's easily accessible, that they don't have to make a trip to Virginia Beach to go to the Neptune Festival, or they don't have to make a trip to Richmond to go to see an art gallery, well, I know that we have them here too, but that I think that that's important for them to see, that I can, I love Williamsburg, I grew up here, and I can stay here. I can, I can still be a violinist and have these things, or an artist, or a filmmaker, or, I don't know, just, I think that that's an important, an important part too. So, as you can see, I'm agreeing with having this arts district, and it's a good thing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Carpenter. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon again. I'm Greg Granger. I was at 319 Milneck Road in Williamsburg. There's been much discussion today, and much of it about this ordinance, but looking at some of the timeline elements, on the timeline, it talks about in March, the analysis of zoning ordinances and architectural review guidelines and other regulations for arts district uses. So I know that these things may not be in this ordinance, but they are on the timeline, which is connected to this ordinance. I'm not here to say that I'm opposed to the ordinance or to say that it's a good or bad idea. In Williamsburg government, we should be as open and forthcoming as anywhere in America. I, along with the other owners, residents, and businesspeople that I've spoken with in that area, have not been notified of any meeting to discuss the drafted ordinance. Most people I spoke with did not even know it would be on today's council meeting. If we are required as citizens to notify each other of a change in the color of our shutters on our home and send out a notice and post signs in our yard and hold public discussions about such a small thing, it is not unreasonable to think that transforming the character of a neighborhood is important enough to send out a notice such as that. I know the law does not require City Council sending out a notice to property owners or residents, but your conscience and your pledge to the citizens of Williamsburg should. Are you for an informed citizenry that participates in government and has healthy discussions about new laws and policies, or are you for a less informed citizenry that is excluded from the process? Your actions today will speak loudly. Now that the ordinance has been drafted, please provide the residents and property owners with a chance to discuss the ordinance in a public forum and send out notice of said forum. Please delay today's vote until after such a public forum takes place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Excuse me, I forgot to ask one question, and this is really for the lawyer. If you decided that you needed a parking space and you took that, could you take that by eminent domain as a public parking lot for the arts district?
We typically don't, but in this case, I'll let Christine respond.
I'm sorry.
Depends on whether the city continues to own the parking lot and whether or not City Council at that time finds it to be a public use that's sustained by the court if it's challenged. So maybe it's the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor Hallman?
Yes, sir.
My name's Jerry Petro. I live at 1101 Lafayette Street, and I also own 1105 Lafayette Street and the empty lot in between. I'd just like to make a few comments about the neighborhood and the district. We've owned property in that area since 1981. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1991. I've probably, me, myself, and Mike Solan are probably just about the only owner-occupied dwellings in the whole neighborhood. I'm not opposed to the arts district. As far as I'm concerned, I already live in an arts district. If you would come to my house and see the beer bottle sculpture in the neighbor's backyard and the beautiful unicorn painted on the back of their utility shed, you find that I would, I already live in a neighborhood of artists, and that's one of the reasons that I live in the West Williamsburg area. I like the exchange of people and the young people and their ideas and everything that goes on in the neighborhood, except maybe a few of the parties. My biggest concern is parking, parking, and more parking. Where are you going to park people? If you do not, when I first saw the map, if you had Casey Fields, you could put a parking lot in there. But when the students are in town, right now, when you drive down Lafayette, it's easy to go down there, no problem, but when the students are back, the entire west side of the street is full of cars. There's very little, because the lots are so narrow and the houses are so, there's very little off-street parking in the area. I find that to be the Achilles' heel of the project, is the parking situation in that area. If you don't mind, this, the houses that I own are 1101 and 1105, bounded between Lafayette and railroad tracks. I just find it hard to imagine that, now, I've lived there all those years, but between the 30 CNO coal trains that run through there every day, and three to five times a day, the fire department wailing down Lafayette Street, maybe even more, I just, it just doesn't impress me as the type of neighborhood that an artsy person is going to want to live in. Plus, you have, I don't know, maybe the 10,000 cars a day, maybe, running down Lafayette Street? I don't know. I mean, it's just, since I've lived there, it's gone up 10 times, probably. And with that, that is basically the only thoroughfare for the fire department, and we talked earlier about the police department response time, and you're talking about choking that thoroughfare for our emergency services by creating this district where you're going to have increased traffic, more pedestrian. I assume people are going to walk around in here and visit these shops. I mean, it's going to be tough to, Lafayette is very narrow there, unless you're going to condemn the properties along the tracks and widen Lafayette, I don't see how this project could be successful. That's just my personal opinion. You're going to offer these tax incentives for the... You're going to offer these tax incentives for the people who move into these buildings, but I have heard no mention of tax incentives for the owners of these properties to convert them into these artist studios. I mean, if you look at the timeline of me, say, I want to rent, say, 1101 Lafayette to an artist, I just go back to when, we owned property at 103 Bacon Avenue, and I think back in 81, when we tried to convert that from a residence to a business, and how arduous a process that was. Are you going to require wheelchair ramps for every one of these businesses, like you did for us at 103 Bacon? Are you going to, are we going to have to have handicapped access bathrooms? You made us pave our parking lot. If we hadn't owned the empty lot next to 103, we wouldn't have been able to have a business there, because you require 2.2 parking places for every employee that you have. Now, I'm one of the very, there's only two empty lots on the west side of Lafayette Street. I mean, there's only, myself and maybe only one other person have adequate parking to run any kind of business along Lafayette Street. Like I say, I'm not against the program. I just think we should look at the area and be very forthright on what we're going to do here, because obviously, you're going to have to, by eminent domain, take some properties to either expand Lafayette Street and to provide parking for people to get to these businesses. I know I kind of rambled, but I hope I made some points for you to ponder, and that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your thoughts. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Beecham, and I'm a property owner on Lafayette Street. My house has been in our family since the 1950s. I had an uncle tell me the other day, he remembers going to the farm and seeing the horses and walking when cars weren't allowed on Randolph Street. So, at least through my family, I've been in the area for a very long time. I commend both the EDA and the city council for, you know, working on any project that's going to help the economic development of Williamsburg. I didn't come here today because I don't think art district is a good idea. And from what we've heard, we had a great presentation from Ms. DeWitt today, and there was, you know, there's a lot of good things that can come from it. I'm mainly here today because I've talked to several of my neighbors, both families who do live in the area, as well as property owners who rent to college students and business owners, or property owners that rent to businesses. And if I had not been called, and admittedly, I don't read the Virginia Gazette every week, you know, I didn't read the article the other day about the Hundred Deer Kill, which had three paragraphs at the end of that article about this subject. So I don't know if that's the, I don't think it's right to expect all the citizens to be informed as we have been. One of the ladies who I spoke with doesn't even have email. So to expect her to go onto the Williamsburg, the city of Williamsburg website to keep track of this kind of stuff, I think is asking a lot for several of the citizens in this district. I'm here today because the city manager's memo from 12/2, as well as the ordinance, there's a lot of concerns I have with it. I'm worried because I'm a property owner, and until I was called by a friend and neighbor early in the week, I didn't know this was being voted on today. I think I called a friend of mine who's on the Economic Development Authority and explained to him my concerns because of the lack of notification to the property owners. And I think we've heard that from several people here. He was very quick to admit that he felt there had been a poor job in contacting people. And I, you know, as I said initially, I don't think having it in the newspaper is good enough. I'm worried because most of the people in this room who are property owners have had experience with ARB, and I'm concerned with how an art district will be created under the guidelines of our Architectural Review Board. I'm sure that a lot of people in this room have had not the best experiences with the recent changes in the rental property requirements in the last five to seven years, and I'm concerned with how that's going to affect what we do to get artists into this neighborhood. I'm just, you know, the biggest thing that I'm concerned about is that we're almost, as a city council, ready to vote on something that the folks who live here and own property were not informed of. And I think inherently, a lot of people are suspicious when things seem to be brought to vote without having an opportunity to gain knowledge on what's going to be involved in the whole process. Some people have talked about the timeline, and, you know, right now, the timeline ends in March. You know, that's seven weeks from now, March begins, and we're supposed to have certain properties start to be analyzed. You know, I'm a property owner. Is my property going to be looked at? Whose property is going to be looked at? What's going to be part of this analyzing properties to see, you know, if it's good for the art district, if it's not? I realize that, after being here today, I now realize that art space isn't coming in to take over, you know, five or six blocks of the city of Williamsburg and make it into some huge art project, and I don't think that was communicated at all. Several people I talked to were concerned about that, you know. And I went on their website, and a lot of their projects are big warehouse buildings or former industrial sites that have been converted, you know, into large loft-type living and working spaces. And until we were here today, I know there's people in this room who thought there's going to be something similar to that in the city of Williamsburg, in this district. I heard discussion of, well, the hotel at the end of the street is really the only place they could do something like that. So I think there's just a lot of confusion. I'm here to speak on behalf of my neighbors on Lafayette Street, both the owners of the property on the left and right of me, neither of which could be here today, and they asked me to just ask the city to, you know, at least put off a vote on this today. So that's why I'm here, and I appreciate the opportunity to give my piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beecham. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us this, giving me this opportunity. My name is Frank White. I live and own residence within the affected area. Kind of listened today and kind of made a tally of what I've heard. It seems everyone who supports the immediate passage of this lives outside the area. I could be wrong on one or two, but it seems to be what I have listened to so far. No one who lives or owns in the area supports the immediate passage of this ordinance. Also, everyone is not against the ordinance, they just, especially those who have concerns, they just want a little more time to study it. I'm not against the arts or this ordinance. Again, I just want an open discussion to explore the concerns raised this day. I really appreciate you giving us this time, giving me this time to talk to you. I want to thank everyone who worked on this. It is a wonderful idea in theory. I just want to see it get past theory. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. White. Anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Hi, I'm Pam Blank, and I have a business here in the city. I don't live in the city. My address is in Gloucester, Virginia. I'm very familiar with this area. I used to have an office right on Richmond Road, 907 Richmond Road. I manage several of the rental properties that are in that area. Mayor Holman and the rest of the council, I really do appreciate you giving us the time to voice some of the concerns that we're hearing out there in the community from the property owners, and not to beat the dead horse. But I really think probably one of the biggest issues that we were feeling was that we have this ordinance being ready to be voted on today. The city doesn't own the property. The artists don't own the property. And the people that you didn't really talk to and get an opinion from, or notified that you were voting on it today, are those people that own that property. And there's some very specific things in the ordinance that I question, and one of those are that it talks about if a qualified art business comes into and takes advantage of the tax incentives, that they will need to sign an agreement with the city of Williamsburg. And it's very vague as to what that is going to, what that agreement covers, how that's going to play into a lease that they may have with the landlord. And in some ways feel that, you know, the General Assembly created a vehicle in order for you to do economic development, and we've all of a sudden decided to take the round peg and fit it into the square hole. You know, it's, yes, we have that vehicle, now let's find a place to make it work. I'm not quite sure if this is the area to do it. I'm not sure it's not the right area to do it. You know, I think what we're just saying is that there seems to be a lot of unanswered questions at this point, at least for the property owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blank. Again, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Patrick Gold, and I'm a resident of James City County, so I don't live here. I have lived in the city in the past for five years. I've been in the area since 1971. I'm currently the Program Services Director for Williamsburg Regional Library. In that capacity, I organize adult programs and cultural arts programs. Let me point out, I'm not speaking for the library, but I do come in contact with a lot of artists in running the Williamsburg Library Gallery. And I thought I knew really the arts community quite well in this town. I was asked to be on the committee that worked on this project, and I was very grateful to. And I was surprised when we had that meeting with the Art Space consultants in March. It was a snowy day, snowy night, and you know how people in this community hate snow, but the community building was packed with people. And so I find it surprising to hear today that people did not know that this was coming. I do read the Gazette, I read WY Daily. It's been on the television stations. So clearly, the evidence that there was some initiative in this region was communicated through the public media. A couple of points that I think that I could maybe address from the standpoint of my work on the committee, and I'm not, again, speaking for the committee either, but as far as parking goes, one of the reasons that this area was deemed a better area is because it does have parking adjacent to it in the Williamsburg Shopping Center and some of those areas. Parking is bad in Williamsburg. People do not like to park, walk from the parking garage to the library. I know that for a fact. I hear it every day. So wherever you put anything in this town, someone's going to object to the fact that they have to cross a street to get to it. But that was one reason that this was felt, that this was a better area than some of the other areas in the community, because it was adjacent to the transportation and the parking. And other people have mentioned about art space itself, and the fact that they convert tobacco warehouses and things like that. The committee realized right from the beginning that this, that their vision, their model for other communities was not a model that would work here in Williamsburg, and we knew that it had to be something unique to Williamsburg. And it seems to me that what Michelle and others in the city have worked on is the best effort to come up with that unique solution to encourage the arts in Williamsburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and council members. I'm Kira Cook, and I live at 315 Penniman Road in the city. And I'm here to encourage you to pass the ordinance before you today. I'd like to build on what Patrick Golden said with regard to the work of the task force, which I also served on. When we looked at other arts districts, over two dozen of them, I believe, in the nation, what we realized was each and every one of them was unique to their own community. And so I think that what, if you pass this one, it's what you might see in 10 to 20 years, because this, I think, is a long-range vision, will be unique to Williamsburg. I can't tell you what it will look like, but I can tell you that it will, if it passes, be unique to Williamsburg and different from any other arts district in the country. Also, with regard to eminent domain for parking or any other purpose, I don't believe, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe any other arts district was created with the use of eminent domain at all. And so I think that those things, for the record, would just like to clarify. I'd also like to talk a little bit about affordability from an artisan perspective, maybe not from a starving artist's perspective, but from an artisan perspective. And what I mean by that is the community that I'm most familiar with, glass blowers, potters, metal smiths, weavers, people who work in the three-dimensional arts. Affordability, maybe we look at that in a non-traditional way. An artist, it's within the realm of possibility that as an artisan, I would need to find a place to live, to work, to create my craft, my art, to show and to sell, and to teach, because many of us do all of those things. And if I can find those four functions in one place for one fee, even if it's larger than what I may pay to live, that's affordable for me, because I'm not paying for separate rents, or paying for separate cooperative agreements, or whatever. So affordability, from an artist's perspective, may be defined differently than what we may traditionally think. Also, I'd like to take the time to thank the staff, who I've been working with on this issue of artists being able to live and work in the city since 2006. You have an amazing, amazing staff, and they work hard, and they do good thorough research and work. And I know you know that, but I like to say that publicly whenever I can. And the last thing is, at the beginning, or earlier in the meeting, Mr. Tuttle mentioned the farmer's market and the really important milestone that it recently reached. And I remember when the farmer's market was created, and there was a lot of public support for that, but there also were critics. And, but council and the city had vision in creating that. And I hope that in this arts creative economy initiative, that we can, as a community, gather that same kind of vision. We don't know what it's going to look like, but I think in the end, like the farmer's market, we could have a thriving arts district that adds to our brand, adds to our community character, adds to our economy, and makes this an even more special place to live and to work and to be. So I encourage you to pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Bob Singley. I own properties in the city. I do not reside in the city. I was raised in James City County, and know a lot of the property owners in the designated area here on Lafayette Street. I'd like to commend, and I also served on the committee, on the Arts Corps Group Committee, looking at bringing an arts district to the greater Williamsburg area, specifically into the city of Williamsburg. Work closely with Michelle DeWitt and members of the city staff, and I have to commend them for the amount of energy and the time that they've spent in the process we've gone through to get to here today, to this point. My main concern in being involved in the committee was looking at another way to ensure the economic vitality of the Williamsburg area. It is not completely altruistic due to my investments that I've got in the city itself. The majority of the future development in the Williamsburg area, I think, will be associated with redevelopment. And you have to look at the compatibility of uses, and I think that the concentration of artists in the city of Williamsburg in a specific area, and creating a synergy and having the landmass to do so, will help with the economic vitality in the future. This process has been completely transparent. We've had a number of meetings. It's been on the internet. As indicated earlier by Mr. Golden, we had a number of meetings with the public, which were well-attended. Having said that, I would request that you consider deferring a vote on the ordinance today, so that we could have meetings and address the concerns of the neighbors and also the people who own properties in this area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Singley. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak?
If not, I'll come back to council for discussion. Vice Mayor Friling is our representative to the EDA, and this is an idea that, in proposed ordinance, it comes forward from the EDA, so I'll turn to you for comments and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks, Michelle. I really appreciate the presentation, the comprehensive nature of it, and all that you shared with us. I also really want to take this opportunity to thank everybody who came out on really fairly short notice, to share your concerns, fears, worries, support for this project or this ordinance, because it was not advertised in advance as a public hearing, and it's only by word of mouth that we were able to let people know that this opportunity would happen today. And it's that word of mouth that's really important, because no one of us can communicate to everyone else, we have to rely on others to help. But through this whole thing, there's one message that resonates over and over and over again, and that is the feeling, it's no surprise to anybody, of the people who either live or own property in this district, that the communication about this process was not as effective as it should have been. I'll grant you that, it wasn't. But that's not staff's fault, and it's certainly not Michelle's fault. I'm not sure it's anybody's fault. I know that staff has done everything that was legally required of them to notify people as designated by the state of Virginia. We've had several speakers who've acknowledged that. And they've also noted that while we might have done everything that we were required to do, did we do everything that we could have done? Probably not. I don't know that we ever do everything we could do. It's sometimes, it's hard to know when your communication has reached all the people and reached them in all the right ways. And that's because communication has to be two ways. If people have concerns, we also hope that they will come to us and express those. Now, I said, I'm not sure it's anybody's fault, but as council's liaison to the EDA, I'm the first person to stand in line and take responsibility or accountability for the perception that we've created in this district, and I'm really, I'm sorry about that. I wish it had been otherwise. I don't think it's a major problem, though. There's no magic date to January 13th, 2010, there's no necessary importance to moving through this process, or taking this next step, or taking this vote today. I think what's more important is that we get it right, and to Mr. Singley's point. We need to all move forward together, we need to build that trust, and we need to, we might not all agree, and that's okay. But I worry about moving forward if there's any perception of ulterior motive, if there's any suspicion about this is somehow hiding something else. I absolutely do not believe that's the case. From everything I know, it is not the case. So I'm inclined to say, you know, that we should defer the vote, but I'm not sure exactly what's the process we're going to undertake in the interim that's going to accomplish what we all want, which is that communication. I also must say I'm a little bit disappointed in something else. I first, the first concern that I heard about this was on Monday of this week, and that is probably because, as I said, we didn't do a good enough job of letting people know what was going to be discussed and potentially voted on today. And at that point, I heard that there was going to be a meeting, I believe on Tuesday at 2:00. And my immediate reaction was, oh my goodness, well, let's get all the information that we can out there, and it might not be quick enough or in the right timeframe for everybody to absorb it, I appreciate that. But also, let's let Michelle come to the meeting, let's have her talk. I'd be happy to go with her, if that would be helpful. And that offer wasn't accepted, and that really disappoints me, because it speaks to the two-way communication that I'm hoping we can foster and we can develop and we can build upon. So, again, you know, my bad. I'll take responsibility for it, but I just hope that we can make progress going forward, we can learn from this, and as we undertake efforts in the future, we'll figure out the better way to communicate to folks. Thank you.
Scott?
Absolutely, I echo everything that Paul said, especially the point that moving forward, if this is going to be, you know, personally, I'm excited about this idea. I think it's a good idea to diversify the economy, it's a good idea that transcends a lot of, transcends many groups throughout this city. And I'm glad to hear that folks have come today with the perspective that I don't know enough, I'm not necessarily opposed, I would just like to be better informed, I'm optimistic about that. But it's incumbent upon council, if this is going to be a success, or if it happens at all, that those who are invested in this are comfortable with it and have as many of their questions answered as possible. So as far as dispelling this, I've heard that at one point today, the term distrust, that's not a good thing, we need to do everything we can to sequester that. I thank Michelle for, on fairly short notice, putting an excellent presentation together. I am hopeful that as time goes forward, some of these rumors, especially the question of eminent domain, will be completely put away, as an assurance, as Ms. Shelton pointed out, you know. The use of eminent domain is written, the exclusion of eminent domain is written down in the Code of Virginia. We can't, can't, there's no wiggle room there, so. Moving forward, I'm with Paul, I would, I'm in favor of delaying this so that as much dialogue can take place as possible. I think, given some more information, this can be a very positive project.
Thank you.
Well, I'll echo Paul and say it is his fault that council, city wasn't notified. I think deferring this for further discussion is absolutely a good idea. You know, I heard a lot of things today that I hadn't thought about, you know, the fact that we're talking about something that could jeopardize what is currently housing for some of our residents, you know, it could take that out of the mix. And the consequence of that, the consequence of traffic and parking, you know, in such a tight-defined, confined place is something that concerns me. There's still talk about affordable housing in this, and that's not part of what we're talking about. Somebody mentioned redevelopment, we're not talking about redevelopment as a goal necessarily. So, you know, I would support an initiative to defer this for further discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Judy?
Well, I'll support deferral. I will say, I am a little unhappy with what I'm hearing, the level of distrust of government. I think we've gotten, we're in a lot of trouble in this country because of distrust of government. And if you can't trust a city council which lives in your city, you know, it's a little hard for me. But this idea that there's some nefarious thing going on, that we're out to get people, it really bothers me quite a lot. And I think what was essentially a very simple idea, we passed the zoning a couple of years ago, and now we want to put some incentives in, we want to make a creative, the creative economy, it's a wonderful economic development thing, all of a sudden has ballooned into this, you're out to get us, kind of thing. And I find that very disheartening, I really do, because we are trying, one of the things the city council is supposed to do is protect the city and enhance the city and make it work better, and this is one of those things that ought to make it work better. And to hear people say, you're doing this terrible thing to us, when we are in fact trying to help. And I think it doesn't help that Michelle wasn't invited to the meeting on Tuesday. It doesn't help that people keep talking about eminent domain when the lawyer says that's not part of it. It doesn't help when all these rumors keep going around, email's probably terrible. But I think I do support a month of people sitting around and talking about this, but I also think it needs to be an honest discussion. And I will bring up something I bring up over and over. How much staff time do we have? How much money are we willing to pay to continue to have staff study and look and do things? I think it's incumbent upon the people who are worried about this to come up with a list of questions, to call some meetings, to say, these are our concerns, and, you know, take some leadership in letting us all figure out how to make this work right. So again, I will support deferral, but I hope we have a good productive month while we have the deferral.
Thank you, Judy. I think for today, this has been an important discussion. The analogy of a two-way street plays strongly here. I think we have heard some things we might not have thought about, I think some residents and property owners in the area have heard some things they might not have thought about as well. I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that, if we do defer, to make sure that dialogue continues, and that whatever we do, we direct staff to set up appropriate meetings to make sure that that takes place. I think, too, this is a terrific idea. I think it is put forward under the rubric of economic development, because that's what the state has created these for, but I think a better term for this is revitalization of this area of the city. And I think if we think about sort of what this area has been, what it is now, and what it could be in the future, it has terrific potential, but if it's going to reach that potential, everybody needs to be on board and we need to be working together to make this happen. And I think if delaying for a month, having the types of community conversations we've talked about here today make that happen, then it seems to me we are all better off. Anybody else have any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
I want to ask Ms. Shelton a question. Do we need to do anything at this moment?
You need either a motion to table, which will bring it back automatically next month, or you need a motion to postpone to either a date certain, or you could postpone it indefinitely, so one of those three motions.
I would suggest a motion to table, so that we know it comes back next month, and if we decide to postpone it further at that point.
You can do it that time, yeah. Parliamentary-wise, I think that would give, I mean, you could delay it with a specific time, but this way, it's very clear it will come back next month, we can direct staff to set up the appropriate meetings and go forward.
And I think that's the appropriate thing. I would just perhaps caution that we may not be in a position by this time next month, because it'll take time to get the notification out that some of the property owners have been talking about, however we decide to do that, or however staff decides to do that. So if we're not here next month prepared to have this discussion, I think that...
Then we can either table again or postpone again to a future date, but...
But I just want, I want the residents and property owners to be aware of that, so that they don't think that, again, we're trying to do something underhanded.
And I think one of the joys of the new media is it's very quick to communicate with people. There are also downsides to the new media as well.
May I ask one other question?
Certainly.
This, Mayor may not be for you, but I got a sense, I don't know this, I got the sense from council, that they, there was some inclination to reconsider the boundaries of whatever district we're looking at. Is that something...
I think if you want to make your motion to table, you could, I believe, Chris, you can make some specifications in there, or is it just to table?
No, it's just a motion to table.
Table. It would come back, but I think in part, we all heard that discussion, staff heard that discussion.
I'd just like to say, for the record, I'm not inclined to include the RS2 component of the current district in an area that we consider for future arts district designation, whether we decide to do that or not.
Yeah, and I think it's, it is a different animal than the zoning designations of the other part of the district.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move to table the, any consideration or vote on the proposed arts district ordinance.
I'd be happy to second.
I have a motion to table and a second. Take the vote, please. Is that procedurally correct? I haven't looked at my Roberts Rules lately on tabling, but I think that's correct.
Ms. Nudson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Again, I would like to thank everyone who came here today, those who participated in this discussion. Again, I think it's been extremely productive for us and I hope for you as well.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I think we and staff would use explicit guidance on the issue. We are accustomed, when there is a zoning amendment, or zoning text amendment, or an ARB case, there's very precise guidance on who is notified in writing and in what timeframe, and who is not. And so this is unusual, and so I need to know what you would like us to do, and also who is responsible for setting up any meeting, whether you want the staff to take responsibility for that, and who you would want notified, if you want written notification, or whether we set the meeting and then give a broad notification and get the word out as best we can, how you want us to go about that.
Let me speak first, and then we'll go to council. My inclination would be to, one, notify every property owner within the proposed district in whatever is an appropriate manner, to set up a public meeting for discussion and provide broad announcement of that meeting. That's mine, I'm one of five, so let's see what others...
May I add to that? And in addition to every property owner, and I think that there's a fairly reasonable way to do this, I think it's also fair to notify the residents who aren't property owners. And we could do that by mailing to the property directly, if it's owned otherwise.
Two different things. One, you go to the tax records, you find out the owner of record in mail, too. Another requires, then, I assume, a mailing to...
Street address.
Street address. I will tell you, and I just need to say, because we do, we take many actions on many things during the year, but if you're setting a precedent with regard to mail notification, you are taking a major change and a different, and to know when we're not, so I just want you to consider carefully, mail notification outside of those legal requirements, it just opens up a real, a lot of questions for the future.
Well, how about if we do mail notification to the owner and ask for their help in them notifying their tenant?
Right. Owner of record is clear, because we don't often, we don't have a record of who the tenants may be, and so owner of record notification within the area exempting the area that you've, Mr. Casey's property, I think that's pretty clear.
And asking them for their help in communicating...
Yes, sure, we can do that.
I think we've had some vocal property owners here that would probably allow themselves to be engaged in doing whatever necessary to notify the people that aren't property owners. Maybe they could go door-to-door.
Okay, thank you.
Does that, do you have other questions about a public meeting?
No, I think, obviously, we'll have to set something up. We won't be able to check everyone's schedule to see who's available and not. And I assume at that meeting, you want us to do something similar to what Michelle did today, by way of presentation and open the floor to questions, is that what you have in mind?
And also, I think it would be convenient and may help with the process of the meeting if we go through the minutes and come up with several, with any number of bulleted questions that were already presented today, that would possibly be presented again.
My sense is that in the presentation and discussion, a number of the questions have been addressed, so we need to make sure those, and the question is, were there questions raised that were not addressed in here, and make sure that they're part of the presentation. That's something I think we can work with staff to do.
Very good.
That's fine.
Any other questions?
And I guess this will not be a notice council meeting, so that I assume we're not going to have a majority of council here. Okay.
That's the other question, dear.
I would like to go...
Why not?
Well, you could do it as a notice council meeting, but that case, we would do a notice council meeting, and they're two different things. If we do that, you can certainly do that if you choose. If it's going to be a public meeting that the staff is holding, then we want to make sure, if you're going to be there, that we abide by the notice laws, that's all. So you have to make that decision.
I assume everyone on council would like to be at that meeting, is that correct? If at all possible, so I think...
Then we will set a date and notice a meeting, and we'll send out a written notification to the property owners of record.
And with that, there would be publication in the Gazette, you have to advertise council meetings.
No, we'll have to post council meetings, they're not advertised.
Because that thing maybe didn't work so well the first time around anyway, so I think the mailing will help.
So, do we have a motion to table? And where are we on that?
I just reopened the issue on this, so...
This is just clarification.
Clarification for this, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. City attorney reports.
I have nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Scheduled meetings, is there anything particular notice?
Just want to point out, the charter date activities actually occur, the main activity occurs on Friday afternoon at 4:00, rather than Saturday, as shown on your schedule.
Next order of business is unfinished business? I don't believe there's any. Is that correct? New business, I think we have an appointment to boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that city council reappoint Kira Cook to the Regional Issues Committee for a three-year term, effective January 1st, 2011, to expire December 31st, 2013.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
May I indulge you one more moment?
Yes, and I have one...
New business? Mr. Witt, I hate to put you in the spotlight once again, but would you mind, this is communication from the EDA, because it does directly involve, hopefully, city council's participation, would you be kind enough to tell council a little bit about the proposed new business ambassador program?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, and members of council, the EDA, in response to your goals and initiatives, is looking at a business ambassador program that would involve EDA members and city council members visiting with our businesses. And there are a handful of elements to this. We'd like to, we feel it's smart to start with our new businesses. So as we learn which businesses obtained a business license in a month, we're suggesting that a city council member and an EDA member schedule a meeting with that new business as a meet and greet, welcome them to the city, you know, have a nice dialogue. And eventually, we'd like to survey them about, you know, why did you choose Williamsburg? What's special about your business, those types of things. So the EDA is suggesting that it be a meet and greet with an EDA member and a city council member, and then a leave behind some information, talk about our programs, and tell them we'd like to send a survey to them in a couple months that asks them those types of questions that I mentioned.
And don't come away without the email address.
Yes, we need to collect the email addresses from our businesses as well. And then we anticipate, you know, get that going, evaluate it, and then hope to move into an existing business visitation program, which many communities do. It's a great economic development tool, in that you gather data about how businesses are doing, how they project their future, what their issues, needs, what's going well. And it's all held confidentially. I've cleared with the attorneys that the state code allows that to be held confidentially. And then you can look for trends. You know, what are some general business needs, and how can the city respond to that?
And when you say data's held confidentially, that means that it's exempt from a FOIA request?
Exactly.
Because of proprietary nature of the information?
Exactly. We researched the state code this morning, or the city attorney did, and that is a provision that it's not subject to FOIA requests.
Thank you. This is a good step. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, and thanks to the EDA for pursuing this. Anybody else have new business? I have one request under new business. I assume this is the place to do it. I've had a number of people talk to me about the question of trash cans inside yards, and whether they should be enclosed or not. And I would like to ask staff if they would look into what an ordinance dealing with that could be, you know, what are the, you know, possibilities there? And also, could it be restricted to certain parts of the city, or what? So if you could ask staff to look at sort of what an ordinance might look like, and what are the pros and cons, so that we could at some point have a discussion about that. Anybody else have any new business? If not, we're now at the open forum part of the meeting, where we ask anyone who wishes to come forward to speak to any issue, to do so. Mr. Dowell, I have your card. I assume it was taken care of, and the other, but I wasn't sure whether you had one or two requests to speak. If anyone wishes to speak to any issue, and address council on any issue, this is a time to please come forward. Not seeing any, I'll bring that to a close. Do we have any other business coming before us?
No, but I moved to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?